I call the September 1st, 2022 Rutherford County Commission meeting to order. At this time, Commissioner Gooch will lead us in the pledge to our flag and our prayer.
Let's go to our Father in prayer. Oh Father, we love you and we praise your name, for we know that all good comes from you. Father, we would ask that you bless this body, and would you give us the wisdom, the knowledge, compassion, and humility to best represent the people who have sent us here? And Father, we also ask that you bless our new mayor, Joe Carr, and would you also give him wisdom and knowledge and compassion and humility to lead us forward? Father, we love you because you first loved us, and we are convinced that neither angels nor demons, neither things above or things below, neither heights nor depth, nor anything else will be able to separate us from your love that we share in Christ Jesus our Lord, and it is through his name that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
Three white stars on a field of blue. God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
It's not on the agenda tonight, but we're going to have row call. Commissioner Oliver.
Present.
Commissioner Piercey.
Here.
Commissioner Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Davison.
Here.
Commissioner Beverly.
Here.
Mr. Cus.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Irvin?
Here.
Irvin, sorry. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Mr. Phillips.
Present.
Mr. McAdoo.
Here.
Mr. McMurray.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Mr. Shirino.
Here.
We have a quorum, 20 present. At this time, I will now open the floor for nominations for chairman of the county commission.
I stand to nominate Commissioner Jeff Phillips as the commission chairman.
Second.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to make a motion to cease nominations and to elect Commissioner Phillips by acclamation.
Second.
At this time, I'll do a row call, and you can vote yea or nay. Mr. Oliver.
Yea.
Mr. Piercey.
Yea.
Mr. Rather.
Yes.
Mr. P.
Yes.
Mr. Davison.
Yes.
Mr. Beverly.
Yes.
Commissioner Cus.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Irvin.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Dodd. Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. McAdoo. Mr. McMurray.
Yes.
Mr. Gooch.
Yes.
Mr. Shirino.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's going to be different, but that doesn't mean it's going to be bad. Different and change sometime is good. Prepared a couple of remarks, and they'll be short and brief. I tried to make bullet points, but I knew that when I got up here, I'd be nervous and probably forget, so I tried to write them down, so if I stumble a little bit, you guys forgive me. Number one, I want to thank you for putting your trust in me. I know that trust is something that's earned. I've worked hard over the years to build a trusting relationship with most of you, and I will work even harder to earn the trust from those of you who will seek it. I know the golden rule at times has been overstated and worn out. It's somewhat of a motto, but it's also a rule of life for some of us. What does the golden rule say? It says, "Do unto others as you would have them do unto you." What it doesn't say is, "Do unto others before they do unto you." The golden rule, "Do unto others as you would have them do unto you." I wanted to mention a little bit about leadership. All of you guys, every single solitary one of you are leaders. To put that into some context, who is the greatest leader in your mind of all times? To me, it's Jesus Christ. What kind of a leader was Jesus? He was a servant, not boastful, but he was a servant. As an example, one of the last things that Jesus did the night before he was crucified, when he had what supposedly was the Last Supper with his staff, with his disciples, with his followers, was to wash their feet. As I said, everyone here is a proven leader. I ask you, along with myself, to reexamine your thoughts and definition of a leader. Is it about the one who leads? Or is it the one who he or she leads? Is it about you or me who leads? Or is it about the ones who you and I lead? This is the first year of our term, and in my mind, I try to develop some type of a roadmap. I would ask each committee, led by their chairperson, to discuss short-term goals for the next year, and to make those goals the focus of your committee agendas. Of course, there'll be firefighting done every day, every week, and every month. But let's not lose sight of what our goals are for this coming year. Keep those in focus and keep the end in mind in sight. Listening seems to become more of a forgotten skill. Listen to all, seek others' input, and wait until we have listened thoroughly before we make decisions. One of my favorite quotes comes from the book of Isaiah. "They that wait upon the Lord shall renew their strength; they shall mount up as wings on eagles; they shall run and not be weary; they shall walk and not faint." And my addition is, teach me, Lord, to listen and to wait. Soon tonight, you will be asked to make a request for your committee assignments. Be open-minded about your service. State your mind and your preference, however, be open-minded to serve where you may be needed. This summer has been a difficult one for some of us, and I want to say thank you for all of you who have listened without judgment and encouraged without conditions. You are and always will be special to me. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is a election of the chairman pro tem. The floor is now open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Trey Gooch.
Commissioner Harris. Have a second. Mike Cussh. Any other nominations? Madam Clerk, can I go on the board for this?
Sure.
We're going to go on the board for this, so please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Nineteen yes.
Oops. I guess I probably need my voter up here, don't I? Since the vote has been recorded, I will request that the clerk put in the minutes that it's an aye vote from Chairman Phillips. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chairman Kirk and Gooch. Next on our agenda is the election of chaplain. The floor is now open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, since I got this nice delicious cookie, as the current chaplain, I would like to nominate Commissioner Romel McMurray.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to elect Commissioner Romel McMurray as our next chaplain. Any other nominations? We're also going to be on the board for this, so Madam Clerk, if you would, please cast
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change
Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Commissioner McMurray. It's going to be a little hard for me to not call you by your first name from time to time, but I'll get used to it. We've had a request to move item I up on the agenda, and without objections, I'll do that. It's another election, and it'll fit more consistently on the agenda, so without objections, we'll skip down to item I, elect steering committee. The floor is now open for nominations for steering.
Chairman Phillips.
Commissioner Percy.
I would like Mr. Piercey.
What did I say? Piercey.
I'd like to nominate Craig Harris for steering.
Craig Harris. Commissioner Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Pettis Reed.
Pettis Reed.
I'd like to nominate Jonathan Beverley.
Jonathan Beverley.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Alan McAdoo.
Alan McAdoo. Commissioner Shirino.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Rather.
Michael Rather. Commissioner McAdoo.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Commissioner Pettis Reed.
Nominated.
I mean Paul Johnson. I told you Pettis, I was going to put you a twin up here.
Commissioner Paul Johnson. Commissioner Anthony Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Wayne Irvin.
Wayne Irvin.
Can you nominate yourself?
Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Cus.
Commissioner P nominates Commissioner Cus. Any other nominations? How many do we have, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I move that nomination ceased and we vote for seven.
Thank you. We have a motion to close nominations and choose from the eighth that's been nominated. Vote for seven of the eight. Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Any objection that motion carries? We're going to do things a little bit different. Steering committee, normally when we have multiple people nominated for positions, they're allowed to speak, and I want to go off plane just a little bit and allow all of the, especially since we've got newer commissioners aboard and may not know as much about everyone as they would like. So I'm going to go off a little bit and allow each commissioner that has been nominated to get up for a minute and introduce yourself and say whatever you want within that one minute that you have, okay? So the first one will be number three, will be Michael Rather. Anything to say? Yep.
No, I'm not brave, Mr. Chairman. I've been here four years, lived my whole life here, and there's a couple committees that stood out to me from day one, and it was steering and public safety. I'm very passionate about both. I applaud Chairman Phillips talking about being servants. I want to serve and have people, help get people involved that want to serve, and that's the only reason, is they want to serve. So, you know, like I said, I've been on here for, I think I've been on steering three years. I'd love to stay on here, and that's about it.
Commissioner Jonathan Beverley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't take but just a moment. My name is Jonathan Beverley, for those out in the crowd who do not know me. I am a newly elected commissioner for District 6. This is my first commission meeting. I'm seeking the steering committee. I went through the steering committee appointment process for a position a few years ago to see the importance of that committee and how the decisions that committee affects our county for years to come. I want to be a part of that process. I want to represent the new commissioners. I want to represent my district. I want to represent our county as a whole as a way to guide us in the future, and that's why I humbly ask each and every one of you for your support. I wish to work as a team, and I hope to accomplish that. Thank you.
Commissioner Mike Cussh.
Thank you, everybody. Mike Cussh, Commissioner District 7. Starting my third term as commissioner, and for later use. I've been on the steering committee, been there four years. I am a good fit for the steering committee for at least years. Also, I ask the great, lot of committee and.
Rutherford County is growing, 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 and we see a lot of folks moving in from all over the country, all over the world, really, and diversity matters, and I want to make sure everybody's covered. Transparency is huge for me. I always think about that. So for those reasons, I would like to stay on steering committee. Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Cus. Commissioner Pettis Reed.
I'll stay right here, Mike. I have been on the county commission for eight years and on steering for four years. When I left the corporate world after 44 years and dealing with other people, and I had the position of a writer and media and working with legislative and people at the state capitol in Washington DC and what I did as far as, but the most important thing I enjoyed was working with volunteers and farmers across the state of Tennessee. And when I left that corporate world, I said, "I want to get into something to serve Rutherford County and go back to the county that taught me what to do," and I owed a whole lot to this county, so this is where I come to. One of the important things I wanted to be a part of was public safety, and I've been chairman of that committee for the past four years. We accomplished a whole lot, but I've also been vice chairman of steering. And steering has a lot of things within it that I think is vital to this commission. And when you say steering, you've got to think about what we have in all our vehicles, a steering wheel, and it gives us direction and where we've got to go, and that's what steering does upon this commission. In the job that I had prior to coming here, as I said, I did a lot of writing. I published a magazine, and the company I worked with was called Journal Communications, created by Alex Haley. And I walked into that company, and every time I'd walk in that company every so often, they have a large picture of Alex standing there, and I got to learn a whole lot about Alex and his life and things. Alex once said that in life, you run into reality, and said, "You either accept reality or reality will accept you." And I've often thought about that, what we do here on this commission, is we deal with a whole lot of reality, what's important for the citizens of Rutherford County, what's important in making things better within Rutherford County, and that's what we do. And I hope with what I can do, if I have the opportunity once again to be on the steering committee, is to deal with those situations and help with its steering.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Paul Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Paul Johnson. I am starting my fifth term as the county commissioner. I represent the citizens of District 13, but I also represent all the citizens of this county. I'm very conservative, and I'm on the budget committee, and I consider this as a servant's role. The agenda is not about me, it's about Rutherford County, and I humbly ask for your support to continue on the steering committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Wayne Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank each and every one of you for generously giving of your time to meet over the past few months, to share ideas, and to help me learn and learn about you, your districts, the commission, and its committees, and our county government. I look forward to our conversations, continuing our conversations, building strong, positive relationships, and working with each of you on the challenges and opportunities ahead. As to my experience and background, I'm an attorney and a CPA. I've practiced law for about 35 years and was a CPA for a few years before that. I've managed and led and won complex litigation matters. I've also managed and led and successfully closed complex deals that involved challenging issues and bringing together very diverse groups. I'm committed to applying my experience and background to the work before us, to open and transparent communication lines, and to working with each of you. I respectfully ask for your vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Irvin. Commissioner Craig Harris.
My name is Craig Harris. I'm in District 15. I've been chairman of steering for four years. I'm very proud of what we accomplished in those four years. We had some very serious concerns come up, and one of the things that this steering did is we interpret, we adhere, and we created policy that benefited Rutherford County. And as steering chairman, I feel with the steering committee that we had, we were successful. I hope that you will continue to let me be on steering, and I will always be here to help you in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Alan McAdoo. Alan is starting his second term as commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'm going to give you my qualifications and my education. Graduated from MTSU, graduate courses at University of Tennessee Space Institute, and I've attended numerous CTAAS courses in studying Rutherford County and county government. Also, I am an associate graduate of Gotham, where I deal with a lot of families, and that's very important because that's our job up here, dealing with families, knowing what to say, when to say it, and how to say it. I've served on steering committee many, many years. Matter of fact, I've served on every committee, every committee, and I got the knowledge of every committee. I also got the knowledge of every elected position. But foremost, I got the knowledge and working relationship with our state representatives. That would be the key, and one of the biggest jobs that the steering committee have is trying to get private acts and so on through the state. So based on that, I'm asking you for another term on the steering committee, and I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Commissioner McAdoo. And facetiously, I said second term, and it's really about the 10th term or 11th, Alan? 11th term. Congratulations. Okay, we've had eight commissioners that have been nominated for the steering committee. We're going to call the roll in a minute, and we'll start in District 1. Hope you're on the spot pretty quickly. So when your name is called, you'll name seven of the eight, and those sevens will be the ones that you'll be voting for to be placed on the steering committee. Clear your thoughts for one minute, and then we'll get started. You're continuing to deliberate as your name is called. Repeat slowly. Is that right, Madam Clerk? Okay, here we go. Mr. Hope Oliver.
Thank you. Craig Harris. Pettis Reed. Jonathan Beverley. Alan McAdoo. Wayne Irvin. Craig Harris, Pettis Reed, Jonathan Beverley, Allen McAdoo, Wayne Irvin, Paul Johnson, and Michael Kush.
Commissioner Piercey.
Pettis Reed, Michael Rathther, Craig Harris, Mike Kush, Allen McAdoo, Paul Johnson, Commissioner Irvin.
Commissioner Rather.
Craig Harris, Pettis Reed, Allen McAdoo, Michael Rathther, Paul Johnson, Wayne Irvin. I have one more, right?
Yes. Commissioner P.
Rather, Paul Johnson, Beverley, Harris, McAdoo, Reed, and Kush.
Commissioner Davison. Rather, Beverley, Kush, Reed, Johnson, Irvin, and McAdoo. Commissioner Beverley.
Harris, Rather, Kush.
Slow down a little bit.
Sorry about that.
Can you say it again now?
Yes, starting from the top. Harris, Rather.
Yes.
Kush, Reed, Paul Johnson, McAdoo, and Beverley.
Commissioner Kush.
Kush, Reed, Johnson, McAdoo, Irvin.
Sorry, who?
Sorry.
I didn't catch the last one you said.
Last one. You got McAdoo, right? Irvin, Beverley, Harris.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed.
Harris, Rather, Reed, McAdoo, Johnson, Irvin, Kush.
Mr. James.
Johnson, Harris, Reed.
Just a moment, just a moment. Mr. Johnson.
Johnson, Harris, Reed, Irvin, Beverley, McAdoo, and Kush.
Commissioner Wilson.
Harris, Reed, Beverley, McAdoo, Rather, Kush, Paul Johnson.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson.
Harris, Reed, Johnson, Rather, McAdoo, Kush, Beverley, excuse me, Beverley.
Commissioner Boyd.
Kush, Beverley, McAdoo, Rather, Johnson, Reed, Harris.
Commissioner Paul Johnson.
Kush, McAdoo, Harris, Rather, Reed, Wayne Irvin, and Paul Johnson.
Yes.
Johnson, McAdoo, Beverley, Kush, Rather, Reed.
Commissioner Dodd is not present. Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioners Rather, Beverley, Kush, Johnson, Irvin, Harris, and McAdoo.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Rather, Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Kush, Commissioner Irvin, and Commissioner McAdoo.
Commissioner McMurray.
Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Beverley, Commissioner McAdoo, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Kush, Commissioner Irvin.
Commissioner Gooch.
Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Beverley, Commissioner McAdoo, Commissioner Rather, Commissioner Johnson, and Commissioner Kush.
Commissioner Serrano.
Commissioner Rather, Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Reed.
Oh, hang on a minute. Can you start all over?
Rather, Harris, Reed, McAdoo, Johnson, Irvin, Kush.
You guys want to make a note of this? We have the totals in. Commissioner Harris, 19. Commissioner Reed, 19. Commissioner Beverley is 13. Commissioner McAdoo is 20. Commissioner Rathther, 16. Commissioner Johnson is 20. Commissioner Irvin is 13. Commissioners Rather, Commissioner Kush, Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Paul Johnson, Commissioner Craig Harris, and Commissioner Allen McAdoo are appointed, will be appointed. We have a, will have a runoff between Commissioners Beverley and Commissioners Irvin for the seventh position. So when we go around the room, if you would, vote for one. Commissioner Wayne Irvin, Commissioner Jonathan Beverley. Take a minute.
I've had a request to run backwards.
Commissioner Serrano, you're up.
Commissioner Gooch.
Beverley.
Mr. McMurray.
Beverley.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Irvin.
Commissioner Phillips.
Did you say me?
I did.
Commissioner Beverley.
Commissioner Dodd is absent. Commissioner Harris.
Beverley.
Commissioner Irvin. Mr. Paul Johnson. Commissioner Boyd.
Beverley.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson.
Beverley.
Commissioner Wilson.
Beverley.
Commissioner James. Commissioner Reed.
Irvin.
Commissioner Kush.
Irvin.
Commissioner Beverley. Commissioner Davison. Commissioner P.
Beverley.
Commissioner Rather.
Irvin.
Commissioner Piercey.
Irvin.
Commissioner Oliver.
Beverley and Irvin, if you would, take a minute, clear your thoughts, and then come to the well, the podium if you would, and address the commission. We seem to, we seem to be having a recount here, so hold your horses.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go up there with the chairman and Madam Clerk, and we'll report back.
Thank you for your patience. We'll call the meeting back to order. It appears after running the tape, it is a tie, 10 to 10. I think there was some confusion with one of the microphones that may not have been on, so make sure when we revote, which we will, that your microphone is on, and don't vote until your name is called, okay? So at this time, what we'll do is start the process that we are going through, and that means that Jonathan Beverley, you can get up and take a couple of minutes. Commissioner Beverley, and address the commission.
You know, some spoke about their education. I have a bachelor's degree from MTSU. I have a master's degree. I've studied accounting. I have, I've got certifications in fraud examination. I have got a degree in accounting. I have learned a whole lot. I've applied that in my professional life. I've been a police officer for going on 10 years now. That taught me service. That taught me leadership. But it taught me how to make important decisions, just as decisions we will stand here and make affect the citizens of Rutherford County for the remainder of their lives. It is the exact same decisions I make as a police officer that affect that citizens for the remainder of their life. And that's not a responsibility I take lightly, and it's the gravity of that situation as to why I think I'm going to be good for the steering committee. I've served on the board of directors for the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club. I was president of the Fraternal Order of Police in this county for six years, charged with leading police officers to help shape policy and procedure in Rutherford County, and also trying to influence at the state level. I have many titles. I'm a Christian, a father, and many more. But my motivation is pure and simple. Community, servitude, and leadership. That's what it boils down to for me. How are we going to steer this county over the next four years, eight years, and 12 years? And I hope to bring a unique perspective to that because I have been involved in this community. I have served on the boards. I've gotten to know people from all over this county to make sure that I can be as the best, well-rounded commissioner and leader as we guide this county in the future. So I ask each of you humbly for your vote and support as we make this important decision. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Beverley. Mr. Wayne Irvin.
Thank you, fellow commissioners. I appreciate the gravity of this situation. I appreciate the decision we make tonight is going to have a great impact on everything that we do for at least the next year. Those are significant things that my tied opponent came up with. I believe this is about experience. It's about a little gray hair. It's about a little bit of wisdom. And I'm saying, I'm not saying that Jonathan does not have these things. I am not saying that at all. I'm just saying my experiences as a lawyer and CPA go beyond the level of experience or can make me a better fit for the steering committee than my opponent. I've thought about this a great deal. Like I said, I've, I've been an attorney. I've been in tough situations. I've made policy. I've served board of directors. I've served other commissions. I've appeared before commissions. I have a great deal of experience doing what the steering committee, I believe, does. I've managed litigation, okay? I, I've looked at situations that merit a lot of financial analysis as well as a more in-depth analysis in other areas. So I've looked at rules and regulations my whole life. As a CPA, that's what I do or have done. You look at spreadsheets, you look at analysis, you figure out what drives decisions. That may be getting a little bit in the weeds. It's not the lofty type analysis, but that's the real work that I believe the steering committee does and should do. Digging into the litigation, digging into other issues from the perspective, from the financial perspective. Those are very important. Those are the real work of what happens. So either one of us candidly would be a good choice. I believe my background and experience fits the bill a bit better. I'm pleased to hear, and I live Rutherford County too. My ancestors came here a long time ago. I got here a little bit late, a little over a decade ago, but I've certainly, I believe, contributed to many things in the community as well. I'm probably running out of time, but I would appreciate your vote. It's a vote for experience and, and a deeper, a little bit more gray hair, I guess you could say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Irvin. Mr. Wayne Irvin.
Thank you, fellow commissioners. I, I appreciate the gravity of this situation. I appreciate the decision we make tonight is going to have a great impact on everything that we do for at least the next year. Those are significant things that my tied opponent came up with. I believe this is about experience. It's about a little gray hair. It's about a little bit of wisdom. And I'm saying, I'm not saying that Jonathan does not have these things. I am not saying that at all. I'm just saying my experiences as a lawyer and CPA go beyond the level of experience or can make me a better fit for the steering committee than my opponent. I've thought about this a great deal. Like I said, I've, I've been an attorney. I've been in tough situations. I've made policy. I've served board of directors. I've served other commissions. I've appeared before commissions. I have a great deal of experience doing what the steering committee, I believe, does. I've managed litigation, okay? I, I've looked at situations that merit a lot of financial analysis as well as a more in-depth analysis in other areas. So I've looked at rules and regulations my whole life. As a CPA, that's what I do or have done. You look at spreadsheets, you look at analysis, you figure out what drives decisions. That may be getting a little bit in the weeds. It's not the lofty type analysis, but that's the real work that I believe the steering committee does and should do. Digging into the litigation, digging into other issues from the perspective, from the financial perspective. Those are very important. Those are the real work of what happens. So either one of us candidly would be a good choice. I believe my background and experience fits the bill a bit better. I'm pleased to hear, and I live Rutherford County too. My ancestors came here a long time ago. I got here a little bit late, a little over a decade ago, but I've certainly, I believe, contributed to many things in the community as well. I'm probably running out of time, but I would appreciate your vote. It's a vote for experience and, and a deeper, a little bit more gray hair, I guess you could say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Irvin. Madam Clerk, we'll call the roll, and we're also going to continue to work backward this time. So speak loudly and clearly and into the microphone. Madam Clerk.
I'd also like to state, I will repeat your votes so that there's no misunderstanding.
Sorry?
I'll repeat their votes so there's no misunderstanding.
At it, girl. Very good.
Commissioner Sereno?
Beverley.
Votes Beverley. Commissioner Gooch?
Beverley.
Votes Beverley. Mr. McMurray?
Beverley.
Votes Beverley. Mr. McAdoo?
Irvin.
Votes Irvin. Mr. Phillips?
Beverley.
Votes Beverley. Commissioner Dodd is absent. Commissioner Harris?
Beverley.
Votes Beverley. Mr. Irvin?
Irvin.
Votes Irvin. Mr. Paul Johnson?
Irvin.
Votes Irvin. Mr. Boyd?
Beverley.
Votes Beverley. Mr. Anthony Johnson?
Beverley.
Votes Beverley. Commissioner Wilson?
Beverley.
Votes Beverley. Mr. James?
Irvin.
Votes Irvin. Commissioner Reed?
Irvin.
Votes Irvin. Commissioner Kush?
Irvin.
Votes Irvin. Commissioner Beverley?
Beverley.
Votes Beverley. Commissioner Davidson?
Beverley.
Votes Beverley. Commissioner P.?
Beverley.
Votes Beverley. Commissioner Rather?
Irvin.
Votes Irvin. Commissioner Piercey?
Irvin.
Votes Irvin. Commissioner Oliver?
Irvin.
Votes Irvin.
Votes have been totaled, and Commissioner Jonathan Beverley has received 11 votes. Commissioner Wayne Irvin has received nine votes. Commissioner Beverley will be seated on the steering committee. Congratulations. It is our history to call the steering committee forward, and they'll have a brief meeting to elect a chairman and a vice chairman, and our chairman pro tem will open the meeting. So the seven newly elected steering committees, do you want me to read your name, or you remember who you are?
Congratulations, gentlemen. For some of you, it was a hard fought, but I know you all will do a great job. At this time, I'll open, call the steering committee meeting to order and open the floor for nominations for chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson?
Honorable Chairman Craig Harris.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any other nominations?
Move that he be in.
All in favor, please say aye. Where'd he go? Oh, congratulations.
Right behind you. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, I'm now opening up nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Reed.
Commissioner Reed, second. Paul Johnson. Anybody else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner, vice chair, and that's it? And can I make an announcement?
You can.
Okay, I wanted to go over some real quick with everybody. I need to get this from everybody turned in to me before you leave. I want to tell you also how the process will go. We will, I will look at these, I will try to select them the best I can, I will turn them over to the pro tem. The pro tem will look at them, he will make his recommendations. We bring them back here to the steering. Steering will decide on the committees, and then it will go to the full commission. So I want to make sure everybody understands how that is. It's not just one person on that. But I do need to get these, and we're going to have a meeting, I believe it's September 8th. Rachel? September 8th will be our first steering committee meeting. So it'll be here 5:30. Commissioner, uh...
Are you gonna...
Am I allowed to call them, or you?
Are you gonna, are you gonna set the time that you made in day of the month?
Yeah, oh, for the, yes, sir. Yes, sir. I will confer with the chairman of the commission on that, but we'll try to keep, if any of the chairmen need the dates changed, let me know. Commissioner, is that it?
You've announced a meeting for next Thursday, the 8th, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I think what's on the calendar is Monday, September 12th, but you're changing that to September the 8th, or that, that's the, that's the date, correct?
Hold on. What, what date?
Planning meets on the, on the 12th as well. Evening meeting, but, but the 8th works fine. All you have to do is announce it. And if I could follow up with that, if you could fill out your forms and pass those in before you leave tonight, that would be a big help. Getting back to our agenda, item G, we need to announce three commissioner vacancies on the insurance committee. And item H, we need to confirm planning commission appointments for Commissioner Pettish, Reed, Commissioner Kush, Commissioner Trey Gooch, and Commissioner Joshua James. We have a motion and a second to affirm the appointment of those four commissioners. Commissioner Anthony Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion. Amendment would read, "To divide the motion into four parts, with each nominee be considered and voted on separately with electronic vote."
It's a proper motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor of that motion to split and vote separately, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition?
No.
Motion to split carries. Thank you. Okay, so here we go. I'm sorry? Okay. You want a roll call? That's what we'll have. So we're having a, we have a motion and a second to split the vote.
14 yes, 6 no.
The amendment passes. I guess the best way for this to work is for, we'll just take them, the mayor's recommendation one at a time, and we'll start with Commissioner Pettis Reed, let me... Mr. Chair, I'm, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, we voted for the amendment, and I believe we need to vote for the motion presented with, as amended.
Well, the motion to amend kind of supplanted what the original motion was, so now you do have before the body all four people that have been nominated by the mayor to be confirmed, but instead of voting for them all at once, it was just decided to vote on them each individually and to do so by electronic vote.
The mayor has nominated Commissioner Pettis Reed for appointment to the planning commission, as such appointment requires confirmation by this body before Commissioner Pettis Reed can assume that position. I need a motion to confirm Commissioner Pettis Reed.
So.
I have a motion and a second to confirm the mayor's appointment of Commissioner Pettis Reed. We're going to be on the board, all those ready, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
20 yes.
Commissioner Pettis Reed is appointed to the Rutherford County Regional Planning The mayor has nominated Commissioner Mike Kush for appointment to the planning commission, and such appointment requires a confirmation by this body before Commissioner Kush can assume the position. I need a motion to confirm Commissioner Mike Kush. We have a motion and a second. We'll also be on the board for this, so please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
20 yes.
Commissioner Mike Kush is appointed to the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. The mayor has nominated Commissioner Trey Gooch for appointment to the planning commission, and such appointment requires confirmation by this body before Commissioner Gooch can assume that position. I need a motion to confirm Commissioner Trey Gooch.
So moved.
Or second, without a word.
Motion and a second to confirm the appointment of Commissioner Trey Gooch. We're going to be on the board, so please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
20 yes.
Commissioner Trey Gooch is appointed to the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. The mayor has nominated Commissioner Joshua James for the appointment to the planning commission, and such appointment requires confirmation by this body before Commissioner James can assume that position. County attorney has advised that it would be appropriate for the nomination to be made and seconded, and then vote yes or no on that confirmation.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Commissioner Joshua James to the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. This vote will be on the board, so, I'm sorry.
May be mistaken, but in the past, we've always, if we had a motion, and it failed, it would fail for lack of a second. That's what just took place. Now, seems like we're changing the rules.
Yeah, if I may, I agree, I agree with that. I think here, it's a little bit different scenario, the fact that it's a confirmation of a mayoral appointment, and so I think that statutorily, the legislative body has a duty to vote on whether to confirm or not, and I don't think that simply letting it die would be appropriate. Technically, I'm not so sure even a motion was necessary, because you have the mayor who has requested that there be a vote take place on this appointment, and so I think at a minimum to fulfill the duty of confirmation that the board should, at a very least, vote
Clear, Commissioner Johnson? Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, may I address?
Commissioner Kush.
Okay. This, this was asked for division for some discussion, which I'm going to take part Yes, the, you all saw that our chairman of planning, Jeff Phillips, was left out of the nomination to proceed forward with the planning commission. Shocked the planning commission members and many of you commissioners, both present and We feel, the planning commission feels very strongly, the desire to keep Jeff Phillips on the planning commission, for this main reason. We are approaching a tenure cycle of the comprehensive plan, which is the most critical thing the planning commission does. It is how we form and guide growth, infrastructure, zoning in Rutherford County. The experience of that group of planning commissioners is vital. Jeff has been through multiple comprehensive plans, as have I, as have other antique blond hares that are sitting on that commission. We welcome Trey Gooch to that regional planning commission. Trey has been on the list and has expressed his interest to be on regional planning for some time. Joshua, this is no reflection on you whatsoever, whatsoever. We, on the planning commission, feel that it's important to keep Jeff on the planning commission, so that's why I make this plea to the mayor, that he reconsider the appointment, and, you know, for all what you've read in the papers and seen and have heard, welcome to Rutherford County politics. Not right, not fair. President has been set these last few weeks. We could be in for ugly four years. It's not cool. This commission wasn't broke. Been trying to, now it's divided. I don't like it. We need Jeff on the planning commission. I would respectfully ask the mayor for reconsideration. It's my story, sticking to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kush, anyone else? Commissioner Rather?
I've got that a little bit. I agree with everything Commissioner Kush said. The citizens of Rutherford County, the ones we were elected by and worked for deserve Kevin Phillips to stay on that planning commission.
Anyone else? Commissioner Anthony Johnson?
I yield, I yield.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, I've been up here several years. It's been times that this commission has only given me one committee, purchasing, one committee purchasing, but I decided to go to all committee members' meetings. I don't know what is stopping us from accepting the mayor's recommendation, and Jeff attending the planning commission, and offering his input. It doesn't say that you got to be elected to the planning commission for the planning commission to listen to you. So, you telling me that all the other commissioners out here, if we're not elected to planning, which we weren't, and if we have an idea or anything, that we're not going to attend that planning commission and offer our input? We can all offer our input. We're not stopping Jeff from going to the planning commission meeting, and as I know him, and I've known him for years, he definitely will put in his input, I don't care if he's doing it present, over the phone, email, or whatever, but he definitely would not, not attend a planning commission if he got an input to give to it. So, I don't know you saying that it's going to tear the commission down, blah, blah, this, blah, blah, that, but each one of you, each one of you commissioners up here can attend any meeting, any meeting, and ask to be heard and offer your input. I want each and every one of you commissioners to remember that. Just because you don't serve on it, doesn't mean you don't go. And if you go, that don't mean you're not going to be heard. So, remember that.
Thank you, Commissioner McAdoo. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gosh, this was hard, when you present this. I have no ill will toward you at all, none at all. I have no will, ill toward anyone up here. Mr. McAdoo is right, anyone can attend a meeting. Jeff Phillips has served on this committee for 28 years. 28 years. He's done his job, he has served this community well, and he needs to continue serving in that capacity. No reflection on Commissioner James, no reflection at all. Like I said, it was hard to present this, because I know how it looks to a lot of people. But I want you to know, it's not me against you, it's not me against anybody. I'm for the greater good of this county, and that's why I did this. That's why I'm asking you to just vote your conscience, and if you're up here for the right reason, you'll do the right thing, and that's all I'm asking you to do. But in my heart and in my mind, I know it's right to, for our county mayor to reconsider, and I'm asking our county mayor at this time also, please reconsider. To me, it's no reflection on the county mayor, no reflection on Commissioner James. The reflection is on this community, and what we do for this community. And we should all be up here as one, and stop all this infighting and division, and that's what we have. Somebody said tonight, "Welcome to your first committee, or commission meeting." I said, "Well, this is my first one for this time around." I was up here 17 years, and I feel like I served the community well, and I didn't want to be one of the first ones to get up and speak tonight, that's not me. But it is me to try to do the right thing, that's what I'm trying to do, and I'm pleading, do the right thing, that the mayor, if he will, change his mind or go a different direction. But we do have others that didn't apply, because it's routine, you have your committee there that's already served, there's no announcement for openings, not that there has to be, but it'd be nice if you knew somebody was going to be taken off, so you could apply. We did have some people to apply. In Commissioner James' position, he's coming in, and no bad reflection in what I'm saying, but he's coming in off the street fresh. He didn't know how it had been working, and he didn't realize that there could be several people that are already serving, that were sitting back, not going to rock the boat, because it's going very well, so they didn't apply. Commissioner's sitting right here, has been on BZA in Smyrna for years, he's very highly qualified, but he didn't apply, because where's the opening? There wasn't one until a few days ago. So, I've said too much, maybe, but just vote your conscience, that's all I'm asking you to do, do the right thing for this community. That's what we were elected to do. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I call for the question.
Excuse me, thank you, Commissioner Oliver. We've had a call for the question, and that is up for vote. All wishing to call for the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition?
Aye.
Call for the question passes. So, at this time, we'll go back on the board. We've had, I'll read this again if you want me to, "The mayor has nominated Commissioner Joshua James for appointment to the planning commission, and such appointment requires confirmation by this body before Commissioner James can assume that position." We already have a motion and a second for confirmation. Any, well, question's been called for, so at this point in time, we'll be on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Eight yes, 11 no.
The motion to appoint Commissioner Joshua James to the regional planning commission There is an option, I think, for the mayor to make another nomination tonight, if he wishes to wait, there'll be an appointment made at our next full commission meeting. Anything, Commissioner Carr? I'm sorry. Mayor Carr, please forgive me.
Mr. Chairman, permission to approach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members. It was in no way my intention to divide this commission, none whatsoever. As I've stated publicly, I believe it's important for those of us who... As I've stated publicly, I believe it's important for those of us who've been in leadership before to mentor those who wish to be in leadership. That was my sole motivation, none other. However, in the interest of unity, in making sure that we move forward both as a commission and in the office of the mayor, I'm glad to announce that I'll be willing to nominate Commissioner Jeff Phillips to the Planning Commission, without reservation or hesitation. So, Mr. Chairman, make it official that I currently nominate Chairman Jeff Phillips to the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner P.
I make a motion that we honor the mayor's recommendation and vote for Jeff Phillips.
I would like to second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Jeff Phillips to the Regional Planning Commission. At this point in time, we'll be on the board, so commissioners, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
19 yes, 1 abstain.
Commissioner Jeff Phillips will be appointed to the Regional Planning Commission. Let me make a quick announcement. With that appointment, I am currently serving as chairman of that Regional Planning Commission, and have for 16 years, and I announce my resignation effective immediately as chairman of that board. It appears that we're down to other business. Anyone have anything? Commissioner P.
You know I've got something always. Actually, I said something to Rachel, and you'll be getting an email on this. The Tennessee County Commissioners Association Regional Meeting, closest one to us, is at Henry Horton. That'll be next Tuesday night. It's over in Marshall County. I'm planning on going, God willing, and the creek don't rise. But I would advise all of you, especially your new commissioners, to please come. You'll get to meet commissioners from the other surrounding districts, and they'll bring you an idea of what the legislation will be coming up this year. And also, you'll have time for questions and answers. But I wanted to make sure everybody knew about that, because some of us, the registration is at 5:30. The meeting actually starts at 6:00. I like to get there early. The food line is not near as long that way, but it's a pleasant drive. I'm planning on driving if somebody needs directions, or I may have some room. I have a couple said that they may ride with me, but at any rate, wanted to make sure everybody knows about that. And Rachel assured me she'd be sending you that information. There are other dates and other locations, but they may be anywhere from west Tennessee to, if it's to Knoxville. Excuse me, what time? 5:30 PM is when the registration starts, and 6:00 PM is when the meeting actually starts, and that's at Henry Horton on the 6th. That's Tuesday night, I believe. But now that I have it before, may I take a moment for one other thing?
Let me just interrupt for a second and say, we'll have, Rachel, if it's okay with everybody, to send that information out, so that she'll have it in front of you. Thank you, Robert.
I started to get up a while ago during the debate, and I appreciate what everybody's got to say. Jeff and I have served a long time, our families, our friends. And the reason I didn't get up, you know, we had enough discussion going on there, but elections have consequences. And part of those consequences are, you know, that we have new people with new ideas elected. And in my opinion, as far as Mr. Carr's nominations, that is the mayor's prerogative, you know. We voted and said no. That only meant that he could come back with another person in his place, and then we could say yes or no again. But I'm here to tell you that I appreciate what Joe Carr did. Thank you, Mayor. I think that was very gracious of you. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner P. Mr. Oliver?
Mr. Chair, just a few comments, please.
I'm sorry?
A few comments, please.
Would you stand?
Welcome. I'm Hope Oliver, Commissioner District One, and I just want to say to my District One neighbors that voted, that I appreciate their support, and that I am here to represent all of District One, as well as Rutherford County. I want to publicly thank Commissioner Gammon, who was quite a gentleman. Thank him for his service, and his kind congratulatory message to me on election night. I want to thank Commissioners Allen, and Buchanan, and Phillips for warm welcomes, as well as other commissioners that have welcomed me. Commissioner-elect Irvin and Beverly, as well, for congratulatory calls on election night. My condolences to the family of Sophia Snell, as well as well wishes to the Blackness students that were hit during the first week of school. I want to implore that everyone slows down, and watches out for our children in those school zones. And Sonya Stevenson has a quote on her email that just stood out to me, and it should inspire us all. And it says, "I pray always to have eyes that see the best in people, a heart that forgives the worst, a mind that forgets the bad, and a soul that never loses faith." And so, I just want to put that before this commission, and I want to end by saying, "There's always hope."
Thank you, Commissioner Oliver. Anyone else? Let me run through a couple of dates here, and I'm not sure that these are solid, but they're printed and posted on Channel 19. And the steering committee looks like they're going to meet on the 12th, which will be next, no, I'm sorry, and meet on the 7th, which will be next Wednesday night. And that'll be at 5:30. It looks like on the 16th, our Planning Commission will meet at 6 o'clock. On Wednesday, the 14th, at 4:30 PM, the BZA will meet in this room. On Thursday, the 15th, at 6:00 PM, the County Commission will reconvene in this room. On Thursday, the 22nd, at 1:00 PM, we affectionately call it the Insurance Committee, but it is officially the Risk Management Committee, will meet at 1:00 PM in this room. 5:30 on the same day, the 22nd, Property Management will meet at 5:30. Monday, the 26th, at 9:00 AM, the Planning Commission will meet. Then at 5:30 on the 26th, Public Safety is scheduled to meet. Tuesday, the 27th, at 5:30, Health and Education is scheduled to meet. Then on Monday, the 4th of October, Purchasing is scheduled to meet at 4:30 PM. I'm not thoroughly convinced that those dates are solid, but those are the ones that are posted, and as the committee structure comes together, that might change, but for your calendar, you can turn on Channel 19, and they actually repost that quite often. So, those are the dates, I think, going forward this month that you might be interested in. Commissioner Beverly, you have a question?
I just had another comment. I just wanted to add, the 16th Judicial District is having their recovery court graduation on Friday, September 16th, at 10:30. That's going to be over at the Judicial Center off West Lisle. I just want to invite everyone over there and celebrate that success, so the general public, and also my fellow commissioners.
That's correct. If you would, Commissioner Harris, you might want to stand in the hallway here and make sure you get all those before you, all of you turn them in before you leave, to Commissioner I think all the new commissioners were here at somewhere around 5 o'clock or so today, and you have another meeting after this, so don't rush out, because I think there's some more orientation that'll go on for you tonight. Let me say thank you for your participation, your patience, and working through some really difficult decisions tonight. It is much appreciated, and very well noted. Once again, thank you for being here, thank you for your participation. We are adjourned.